Good evening, everybody, and welcome. And please excuse my no voice. I'd like to welcome you to the May 14th USD 500 regular meeting. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Westphal, would you please call the roll?
Carol Brown, Maxine Drew.
Present.
Danny Humphrey.
Present.
Brenda Jones, Wanda Brown McQuaid.
Present.
Valdivia Nguyen.
Present.
Stacy Ager.
Present.
I'd like to have a motion, please, to approve the regular agenda.
So moved.
It's moved in second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those nay. Motion passed. Ladies and gentlemen, we usually read the board norms and protocol before we start. We agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district. We agree to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself. We agree to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings. We agree to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district. We agree to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings. And we agree to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district businesses. Thank you. Communications. Good evening, Dr. Faust.
Good evening. Of course, we are almost finished. We've made it. And, you know, I'm excited. One, because we've done a lot this school year. And there have been several success stories that I was sharing with Melissa, that we are looking for those reporters that were hanging out during the snow days, that were hanging out prior to me getting here. And now, they're not hanging out, we have these success stories to tell. And so, I told her, we need to go to them now and knock on their doors and say, hey, we have a story for you. We have a real story for you. But I really and truly, I'm just excited. One, for our entire district. When we are, well, right now, our scores are embargoed. And so, embargo means that we can't share. But we have some success stories to actually tell on how we have worked with our students and how our students actually have performed. One of the big highlights that we have to say, and all of them are highlights. Don't want anyone to tweet and say that he didn't mention me. They're all highlights, but it's all part of the district. So I get to brag on the district. We have one of our schools that's named the top school in the state of Kansas, Sumner. I am most pleased to be able to say that we are, yes, that's it. Sumner Academy. To say that we have the top school in our school district. We also, they're actually ranked 55 nationally. And so, one of the things that we know is we know what to do. And so, we're going to continue that. And once we start to see the scores, you'll know that we are on that road to moving more schools. And one of the things that I was talking with a community member is that, and I'll say it, don't hate on Sumner. Celebrate. Those are our kids.
Yes.
Those are our kids. They are a product of the school district. So don't hate and say that's because they've come from our school. Those are teachers who taught those kids who belong here. So we have to celebrate and then ask, when's the next school coming up? Because they're all coming. And so, I definitely, Dr. Skraggs is the principal there, and he'll be here shortly. But I wanted to give him his kudos and talk about the work that he's done. Dr. Skraggs has, he's working also with all of our high schools. But they are now working harder than ever. Not to say they weren't working hard, but we're working harder than ever. We are putting our foot on the gas and making serious, as I call them, boss moves. So I definitely want to thank everyone. And we have some things to celebrate, but I won't continue to prolong because I know it's not the Charles Faust Show. But I definitely am thankful for being the superintendent here in Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools.
Now, we have the Kansas Schools of Character Recognition Program. Good evening, Ms. Stewart.
Good evening, Madam President. Board members, Dr. Faust.
Good evening.
It's our pleasure to be before you. Shawn Coordinator is our social-emotional learning coordinator for our department and my entire team, or most of them are here. If I could just stand, ask them to stand and recognize them for all their hard work. Appreciate them. We're very excited to share with you the Kansas State Department of Education Schools of Character Award. This award is bestowed upon recipients that have worked hard to enhance social-emotional character development. They have demonstrated education principles that include creating a caring school community, engaging families and community members as partners in character-building efforts, fostering self-motivation, and implementing meaningful and challenging academic curriculum that respects all learners, develops characters, develop character, and helps students succeed. So this, we've received this award that we would like to share with the board. Dr. Faust received the award in Topeka. And one of the artifacts we would like to leave with you is that our social-emotional coordinator has led. Shawn Demery is our IMPACT 360. We work with Melissa's department, the Communication Department, to share the work, to share the strategies, to highlight teachers and school counselors. So I asked Shawn to share that with you also and to share this with you. But we wanted to share that award with you this evening that we received from the state.
Thank you.
Shawn produces the IMPACT 360 each month to highlight the work, to celebrate the work, and to share it. So that was one of the artifacts that was presented on behalf of this award. So we appreciate you wanting to share some exciting news and celebrate the progress of our work.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, and congratulations. Well, we're at that time of the year where we're all looking for graduations. So I had the opportunity to attend the Gear Up Parent Graduation. And that was motivating. And then, along with a number of us, we were at the superintendent's honor roll. And from the smallest to the tallest, they were just excited about their achievements. And the one thing that rang through, they thanked their mothers and fathers. And they even directed them to stand up. You know, I'm sure they embarrassed their mother and father a little bit, but nevertheless, it was great. And again, before we see you again, all of us will have attended graduations. And so, we want to congratulate the parents and congratulate the students. That's all I have. Thank you. Someone else?
Ms. Jones asked me to give her regrets that she could not be here tonight. This is her favorite meeting of the year where we recognize all of our scholarship recipients and award people. So she and I were busy the last couple of weeks. Softball games, track meets, prepped and ready workshop on parenting into the teen years, which Children's Mercy helped present, which is very interesting. Wyandotte had a play called "How to Survive the Zombie Apocalypse", which, you know, kids are really into zombies nowadays. Arrowhead had Junior Honor Society induction. Our all-city dance team had a wonderful recital at Wyandotte Auditorium. Schlegel had a community potluck. Of course, everyone knows, we had two nights at the Elementary Music Festival with all of our orchestras from the elementary schools. And that was just wonderful. We came out to double rainbows. So our kids brought double rainbows for us. Schlegel in Washington, and Harmon in Wyandotte had third-grade field days at the individual stadiums, which was really fun. Our Sumner Academy had a Teaching as a Profession exhibition where the kids had put together what they thought was important for teaching, what their plans were for the future. The KCNEA had a retirement reception for some of our people that were losing because they have put their years in, and it's time for them to rest and relax. Rosedale had a musical called "School". Frank Rushman had one about bees, being yourself, not being a follower, but to be an individual. And the kids were dressed up as bees. And little kindergartners and first graders singing songs about bees. It's very funny. It's good. Harmon also had a market day for their entrepreneur class where they went out and planned what they were going to sell and put everything together all themselves. It was a wonderful, successful day. Wyandotte with Ms. Stewart had Decision Day for her seniors. And then, the long-awaited passing of the robe was very, very nice. The middle school had solo and ensemble festival on Saturday at Eisenhower Middle School where you can listen to some of our very young musicians. And of course, we had their all-city children's chorus had their concert along with our Voices of Change choirs. Crowthers had a fifth-grade American Patriot Wax Museum. These children, they picked someone from the Revolutionary War period, most of them. They did research on them. They put posters together. They could explain why they picked them, why they were interested in them. And they were not assigned it, they picked the person, which is very refreshing from when I was in school. Central Middle School had a really nice musical. We have the superintendent's honor roll, which is always fun, like you said, Dr. Nguyen. Harmon's anatomy class did a presentation on the human body and the careers that they had chosen. And the United Way had a celebration. They presented USD 500 with an award, an increase of $2,000 over our giving of last year. So that was a really big deal. Finally, the teaching fellows had a recognition last week. And the migrant recognition ceremony Friday night was fun with all the kids. The little girls and boys were all dressed up. And last night, Sumner had their orchestra awards night. And we had some beautiful music to entertain us. And I think I'm done.
There were a number of things that I attended. I won't hold up everyone, but way to go. I think we do a great job of being in the community and the forefront. I do want to take a moment to thank all of the teachers, the parents, the guardian, the foster parents, those community, social workers. There are so many people working to uplift our children. It's so awesome that we're seeing a lot of things on social media that is positive. Let's continue to spread the positive word about the good things that we are doing. As Dr. Faust mentioned, there are some negative things that people put out there. But the key is for us to focus on uplifting our kids because they're reading those comments out there. And you could say a thousand times, you're doing great. But only one comment, and they will feel torn down. So I want to just continue to pour in love to the community, to our teachers, to our support staff, to everyone. Thank you for your hard work this school year. Thank you for what you do. If no one ever says thank you, I want you to feel like you're thanked and you're appreciated.
Okay, just like to say that I wasn't here for the last meeting because I was out of town. But prior to that, on April 17th, I did go to the ROTC Awards Program at Washington High School to see how well our students are doing through learning about the military. I did attend the Sumner Academy Teaching Professional on May 1st. On May 7th, I attended the Gear Up Engagement for Parent Graduation. And they honored those of us who were there by giving us a plaque, a certificate of graduation for the support that we do in helping them. I did go to the superintendent's honor roll at Wyandotte High School. I attended last week, rather, yes, this week, the meeting with a teacher for negotiations that was held here. On Saturday, I attended, I was the person who had to attend the Graduation Services for Gateway to Colleges from Donnelly College. We had eight graduates from the Kansas City, Kansas School District who received their honors as far as graduation. And then, this morning, I had the privilege of attending the Mayor's State of the Government Address here at the Reardon Center to hear how our community here in Wyandotte County is growing and how it's beginning to progress and how their goal is to try to change and increase the benefits within the neighborhood. And then, I also attended the Schlegel Community Event where they had the students presenting what their concerns are about the things that are going on within the community, particularly with voting, how important it is for everyone to be able to vote. Voting causes us to be able to make the right decisions toward change. And so, I was very pleased to hear the students are engaging in trying to get other students at the age of 18 to recognize how important that is and other things that affect our community to bring about a change.
Thank you.
Okay. Real quick, I know time is of essence. I too attended the mayor's luncheon. And again, in order for our student to be successful, it's going to take the community, it's going to take the school district, and it's going to take our families to all work together to be successful. So it's good to hear that from him. And we've got to continue to push each other to do the best that we can. The superintendent's honor roll was phenomenal to see our young people. And they were so proud. And they were proud to have their parents there. And we just got to continue to support them because we have some of the best students in the world. They just need that push, that love, and to show them that they can do and be anything. For Gear Up, I just want to say, I attended two of their functions to remind parents that they're still accepting applications for their summer program. It's free. It doesn't cost you a thing for six weeks. So please check with your middle schools, seventh and eighth graders. If you're looking for a program to involve them in, they're going to talk about how to select a college, how to pay for it, the ACT, the prep. They're doing a lot of good things with them. So please call. This is free. It doesn't cost you anything but your time and your energy to get yourself involved in that. Yeah, it also provides transportation, breakfast, and lunch. So it's a phenomenal program. And they only have 150 signed up out of possibly 3,300. So we got to do better. It's there. We just have to take advantage of it. The teacher negotiation, hopefully, we're going to be able to work that out. And everyone should be happy. We're giving everybody a million dollars. Just a little contract humor, but we're working on it. But we're involved. So again, we appreciate your support. Continue to support our young people, graduations. There's so many people to be thankful, your parents, your aunt, your neighbor, whomever. All of you all work to help these young people succeed. So we just want to keep it going.
Thank you. Now, we move into the part of the agenda that once again celebrates our Employee of the Month as well as our students. So we'd like to recognize the Employee of the Month, please. Denise Chateau. Para. And recognize her posse, okay?
They're all here. All right, well, good evening, board. Good evening, Dr. Faust. I am Justine Newman, and this is Victoria Johnson. We teach with Denise in the Ladybug Classroom at KCK ECC. We are the Deaf and Hard of Hearing Classroom. And we wanted to be the ones to talk. If our building could stand up, that nominated her. We were told by everybody that we had to talk. They didn't want to. So we have the pleasure of talking about Denise, and I'll let Victoria get started.
As you may or may not know, this is Denise's 28th year of teaching in this school district. So she has served this district for a really long time. And unfortunately for us, this is her last year. So this was a wonderful way to congratulate her on a job well done in this district as she is retiring at the beginning of next month. So I've had the pleasure of working with her for the last four years in the Deaf and Hard of Hearing Classroom. Denise has worked in ECC as well as many other buildings. She has endured a lot of changes in education over the last 28 years, particularly the importance of early childhood education, which is also our passion. And being in the Deaf and Hard of Hearing Classroom, there's been a lot of changes with deaf education, with the laws, including the kids that are deaf and hard of hearing in the mainstream classroom has made a big change on her job as well as the kids that she has helped. Watching Denise in the classroom, she treats all students with respect. She teaches, or she treats us all with respect as well. She uses her years of experience to teach us. And she uses it to build relationships with the kids. Whatever challenge Denise has faced, she has done so with grace and done so quietly. She does rise, she rises above her expectations in our classroom. She's taken many classes to better herself. She's bettered us in the last four and five years. She has bettered, she has made all of our school, all of the staff back here, a better person. And we love you. And no matter what your journey is, we know we're going to welcome you back in our class. So congratulations.
Don't go away. We'd like to shake your hand, please. Now, we will have recognition of a lot more students. Our first group will be the district music students earning state honors. And probably, we'll just, once they are identified, the board will go shake their hands, and we'll just stay in front. District. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Paul White. I'm the band director at Sumner. And we had two students receive one ratings at the state solo and ensemble contest. One gentleman could not be with us. That's Joel Campbell, who earned a one on a snare drum solo. And the young lady with me is Ms. Kamaya Hicks, who got it for a clarinet solo and received a rare perfect score.
Wow.
We got to do, we got to do.
Hi, I'm Michelle Sweeten. I'm the Sumner Academy Orchestra Director. And Raja Watson-Miller will introduce the orchestra awards for the year.
Good evening. My name is Raja Watson-Miller. I am the co-president of the Sumner Academy Concert Orchestra. The following students this year received a one rating at the state solo and ensemble competition. Ryan Buck, Mariah Covington, Christopher Gray, Armando Leva, Alexander Solis, and our Symphonic Chamber Orchestra. Along with going to the state solo and ensemble, we traveled to Lawrence, Kansas for our state large group. And both our concert and symphonic orchestra received straight one ratings.
Also, Alex Solis and Mariah Covington were also chosen for the KMEA All-State Orchestra this year.
Hello, I'm Becky Thomas. I'm the choir director at Sumner Academy. Our choirs also received ones at state large group, both our corral and our combined women's chorus. And I would like to thank you for approving our trip to New York because in New York, all three of our choirs, corral, combined women's chorus, and the corral men, all received a gold award and second place in their division. At state solo and ensemble, our women's ensemble and corral men also got ones. And we had a record number of soloists and soloists get one at state solo and ensemble contest. I'm going to let them introduce themselves. And also, record number of people in the all-state choir this year. So we're very excited. I'll let them introduce themselves.
Good evening. I'm Jakela Brown. I'm a freshman at Sumner Academy. I am a member of the Sumner Academy Women's Ensemble and the Combined Women's Chorus.
Hi, good evening. My name is Deborah Vasquez. I'm a junior at Sumner Academy. I am part of the corral and combined women's, and I made the all-state choir.
Hi, I'm Audrey Henshies. I am part of the Sumner Academy Women's Ensemble. I also took a solo to state and earned a perfect score, one.
Thank you.
Okay. Hi, my name's Amari Lewis. I'm a junior. I'm in corral and the combined women's chorus. I made all-state, and I got a one at state for my solo.
Good evening, everyone. I am Mr. Kevin Relifer. I serve as director of bands at Wyandotte High School. And I'm here to speak on behalf of two students, one present. One, I can talk about Christopher Hurd first. He earned a one at the same competition, the solo ensemble. He's a senior, so he's getting ready for his baccalaureate today, so he's not here. But he also earned a spot in the KMEA All-State Band and Concert and Jazz. So that's Christopher Hurd. And then, here with me, I have Jakaya Hall. She's a sophomore. She also earned a one rating at state for solo ensemble. And this was her first time. She's a sophomore, and she was one point away from a perfect score. So next time, we're going to get the perfect score.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Corey Simmons. I'm the orchestra director at Harmon High School and area elementary schools. With me, I have a student representative, Ingrid Marin. This year, and I'm just going to, this year at Harmon, we had a pretty good, we had a great orchestra year. We have two classes for orchestra in the school. And between the two classes, all of the students participated in the regional solo and small ensemble event and the large ensemble event. And for the first time in at least 20 years, we earned a one at the large ensemble event. And also, not with me, they couldn't make it today. I had two students.
I'm a ninth grader at F.L. Schlegel High School. And I do not know what college I want to attend yet, but I do want to be majoring in psychology or dentistry.
Wonderful.
Hello, my name's Ashley Estevan, and I'm a freshman at Sumner Academy. And I still haven't decided on what college I wanted to go, want to go to. And I still haven't decided on what major I want to major in.
We're gonna move along now to the Honeywell Hope Scholarship. We have three, three young men who are recipients this year. And the Honeywell Scholarship is for students who want to get involved. It's basically based on character and work ethic and, of course, academics. Once they're selected, they're matched up with a mentor, okay? They are, the summer recipients are, the scholarship recipients are also eligible to be summer interns and be paid for that. And their scholarships range from $1,000 full-ride scholarships each year at a two-year trade or local community college. The scholarship is renewable up to three years. So I'd like to introduce our three young men right now.
Hello, I'm Elijah Gibson. I go to F.L. Schlegel High School, and I'm a senior. So this year, I'll be graduating, and I'll be attending KCK Community College, or at least that's what I think I'm gonna go to. But I don't, I'm thinking of electric, electric technology major, but they want me to keep my options open and go to a college fair and see what they got to offer, so I'm still undecided.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kong Peng Vang, and I'm a senior at F.L. Schlegel. And the college I'm planning to go to is KCKCC, and the major I attend to do is computer drafting, and that's-
My name is Josh Schmelow. I go to Sumner Academy. I'm a senior this year, and I plan on going to KCKCC to pursue a welding career with Honeywell.
Good evening, board. My name is Dr. Valerie Chow, and I'm president of the KCK Public School Educational Foundation for Excellence. And this year, we have awarded eighteen recipients of our scholarships based on an essay that they have written. So we will let the students introduce themselves.
Hello, I'm Destiny Haynes. I'm a senior at F.L. Schlegel High School, and I plan to attend Dillard University, majoring in criminal justice.
My name is Ladeja Taylor. I'm a senior at Washington High School, and I will attend KU in the fall. I plan to major in film and media studies.
Hello, my name is Anita Oji, and I'm a senior at Washington High School. I plan to go to UMKC and major in biology.
Hello, my name is Tia Leon, and I'm currently, I'm in Washington High School. And in fall, I'm planning to attend UMKC, major in business accounting.
Hello, my name is Tong Mua, and I'm also at Washington High School. In the fall, I'll be attending KU, majoring in biology.
Good evening. My name is Javen Betts. I attend Sumner Academy. I will be at KU in the fall, studying secondary education with the ultimate goal of being a superintendent.
Hi, my name is Van Liens. I'm currently a senior at Washington High School. I plan to go, I plan to go KCKCC and then transfer to UMKC, study at business.
My name is Kayla Wortman. I go to Washington High School. I plan to go to KCKCC and study education.
Hi, my name is Omom. I am a senior at Washington High School. I plan to go to KCKCC, major in business.
Hi, my name is Tin Tang. I'm a senior at Washington High School, and I'm going to K-State to study several things.
My name is Annie Zhang. I'm a senior at J.C. Harmon High School. I'm planning to attend UMKC in the fall and majoring in engineering.
My name is Nalani Shalinford. For the fall, I plan on attending KCKCC and then transferring to Baker or Wichita State University.
Hello. I guess I'll do a short recap of what I said earlier. I'm Elijah Gibson, a senior at F.L. Schlegel High School, and I'm expecting to attend KCKCC for their electric technology.
Hello, my name is Brian Hill. I attend Sumner Academy, and I plan on getting both a bachelor's and a master's in computer engineering at Kansas State University.
Hello. I guess I'll do a short recap of what I said earlier. I'm Elijah Gibson, a senior at F.L. Schlegel High School, and I'm expecting to attend KCKCC for their electric technology.
Hello, my name is Brian Hill. I attend Sumner Academy, and I plan on getting both a bachelor's and a master's in computer engineering at Kansas State University.
Hello, my name is Raina Gavan, and I am a senior at Sumner Academy. I plan to go to a college. I'm not, I'm still working it out right now. And I want to major in actuarial science and business.
Hi, my name is Anaya Singletary. I currently attend, sorry, I currently attend Sumner Academy. In the fall, I'll be going to Howard University as a biology major on a pre-med track.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Hodges. I represent the Troy Hodges Memorial Scholarship. Troy was a teacher and coach at J.C. Harmon for twenty-five years. And upon his death, two of his former athletes came and suggested that they start a scholarship in his honor. With today's recipients, we've gone over $80,000 since 2011. I'm pleased to introduce to you some of the nine scholars for this year. I want to congratulate them and all that applied. Reading those essays and, and accomplishments was just a real treat and so hard to decide. So my congratulations to all of the applicants, their parents, the board, their teachers, and their schools. Thank you.
My name is Stephanie Fernandez. I attend Sumner Academy, and I will be attending K-State this fall, and I plan to pursue a major in biology.
My name is Oliver Vera. I am a senior at J.C. Harmon High School. In the fall, I will be attending UMKC, pursuing the pre-med route while majoring in biology.
My name is Saul Orozco. I'll probably be going to KU, oh yeah, and I'm a senior, at Windout High School. And I don't know what I'll be studying.
Javen Betts again, from Sumner Academy, and I do appreciate this honor.
My name is Nalani Shalinford. I go to J.C. Harmon High School. I plan on going to KCKCC in the fall, and my major is graphic design.
Yes. My name is Annie Zhang. I'm a senior at J.C. Harmon High School and planning to attend UMKC in the fall, majoring in engineering.
Our next student recipient is for the Winchell Children's College Scholarship, based out of Windout High School. And it's a supporting of students at Windout. It awards a student a $1,000 four-year renewable award. And I'd like to introduce you to our recipient for this next, for this year.
Hello, my name is John Veer Coze. I'm attending Windout High School. I am planning on attending NIAC, North Iowa Area Community College.
We have a few students who have completed their associate degrees already while graduating from high school. We have two of them here today, and to do the honors is, from Kansas City, Kansas Community College, is Dr. Bethan Krieger.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to be here, representing Kansas City, Kansas Community College, and these wonderful students. I want to take a moment for us to appreciate the hard work that students go through when they're not only trying to attain a high school diploma, but also an associate's degree. So if we could please applaud the students for a moment. And I just want to say that we value the partnership that we have with Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, so that these students can be afforded the opportunity. I am going to let the students introduce themselves to you and talk a little bit about themselves. So again, thank you very much.
Hello again, everyone. My name is Oliver. So yeah, so I started taking dual enrollment courses my sophomore year in high school. I remember, I always wanted to take challenging courses, so I went to my counselor. I asked her, what's the most difficult classes you guys have? And she said, these dual enrollment courses through KCKCC. And I said, right, right, immediately I said, sign me up, please. And then I've been taking the dual enrollment courses ever since then, and here I am today, graduating with an associate's degree in science while still in high school.
My name is Still Saul Orozco. In the time that I was up here before, I still haven't figured out what I want to do. I guess if anyone wants to start dual enrollment classes, they're not very difficult. I suggest that you do that. Getting an associate's out of high school is pretty good. Limits the options to where you can go to college, though. That's not. And I wish I could've gone to KCKCC so that I could have another year to the side, because I still don't know what I want to do. But I suppose I'm grateful for the opportunity that Windout High School has given me and Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools.
My name is Kayla Wortman. I go to Washington High School. I plan to go to KC-KCC and study Education.
Hi, my name is Sohmo. I am a Senior at Washington High School. I plan to go to KC-KCC, majoring in Business.
Hi, my name is Tin Tang. I'm a Senior at Washington High School and I'm going to K-State to study Civil. Thanks.
My name is Annie Zhang. I'm a Senior at JC Harman High School. I'm planning to attend UMKC in the fall and majoring in Engineering.
My name is Nalani Shielinford. For the fall, I plan on attending KC-KCC and then transferring to Baker or Wichita State University.
Hello. I guess I'll do a short recap of what I said earlier. I'm Elijah Gibson, a Senior at FL Schlegel High School. And I'm expecting to attend KC-KCC for their electric technology.
Hello, my name is Brian Hill. I attend Sumner Academy. And I plan on getting both a Bachelor's and a Master's in Computer Engineering at Kansas State University.
Hello, my name is Raina Gavan and I am a Senior at Sumner Academy. I plan to go to a college. I'm not, I'm still working that out right now. And I want to major in Actuarial Science and Business.
Hi, my name is Anaya Singletary. I currently attend, sorry, I currently attend Sumner Academy. In the fall, I'll be going to Howard University as a Biology major on a pre-med track.
Good evening, I'm Kathy Hodges. I represent the Troy Hodges Memorial Scholarship. Troy was a teacher and coach at JC Harman for 25 years. And upon his death, two of his former athletes came and suggested that they start a scholarship in his honor. With today's recipients, we've gone over $80,000 since 2011. I'm pleased to introduce to you some of the nine scholars for this year. I want to congratulate them and all that applied. Reading those essays and accomplishments was just a real treat and so hard to decide. So my congratulations to all of the applicants, their parents, the board, their teachers, and their schools. Thank you.
My name is Stephanie Fernandez. I attend Sumner Academy and I will be attending K-State this fall and I plan to pursue a major in Biology.
My name is Oliver Vera. I am a Senior at JC Harman High School. In the fall, I will be attending UMKC pursuing the pre-med route while majoring in Biology.
My name is Saul LaRosco. I'll probably be going to KU, oh yeah, and I'm a Senior, at Windot High School. And I don't know what I'll be studying.
Javen Betts again from Sumner Academy and I do appreciate this honor.
My name is Nalani Shielinford. I go to JC Harman High School. I plan on going to KC-KCC in the fall and my major is Graphic Design.
Yes. My name is Annie Zhang. I'm a Senior at JC Harman High School and planning to attend UMKC in the fall, majoring in Engineering.
Our next student recipient is for the Winchell Children's College Scholarship based out of Windot High School. And it's supporting students at Windot. It awards a student a $1,000 four-year renewable award. And I'd like to introduce you to our recipient for this next, for this year.
Hello, my name is John Veer Coze. I'm attending Windot High School. I'm planning on attending NIAC North Iowa Area Community College.
We have a few students who have completed their Associate degrees already while graduating from high school. We have two of them here today and to do the honors is from Kansas City, Kansas Community College is Dr. Bethan Krieger.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to be here representing Kansas City, Kansas Community College and these wonderful students. I want to take a moment for us to appreciate the hard work that students go through when they're not only trying to attain a high school diploma, but also an Associate's degree. So if we could please applaud the students for a moment? And I just want to say that we value the partnership that we have with Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools so that these students can be afforded the opportunity. I am going to let the students introduce themselves to you and talk a little bit about themselves. So again, thank you very much.
Hello again, everyone. My name is Oliver. So yeah, so I started taking dual enrollment courses my sophomore year in high school. I remember, I always wanted to take challenging courses, so I went to my counselor. I asked her, what's the most difficult classes you guys have? And she said, these dual enrollment courses through KC-KCC. And I said, right, right, immediately I said, sign me up, please. Then I've been taking the dual enrollment courses ever since then. And here I am today graduating with an Associate's degree in Science while still in high school.
My name is Still Saul LaRosco. In the time that I was up here before, I still haven't figured out what I want to do. I guess if anyone wants to start dual enrollment classes, they're not very difficult. I suggest that you do that. Getting an Associate's out of high school is pretty good. Limits the options to where you can go to college, though. That's not... And I wish I could have gone to KC-KCC so that I could have another year to the side because I still don't know what I want to do. But I suppose I'm grateful for the opportunity that Windot High School has given me and Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Jamelle Brown and I'm here from Sumner Academy Debate and Forensics, here to introduce some amazing students to you. First, I am going to introduce Ms. Nimara Freeman. Nimara is a sophomore at Sumner Academy and she won the National Urban Debate League's National Tournament, which is a big deal, top speaker as a sophomore. The tournament was at George State University in Washington DC. And I'm going to let her kind of give her the information.
So like Ms. Brown said, my name is Nimara Freeman. I competed at Georgetown of Washington DC at the National Urban Debate League. I also was able to compete at State a couple of weeks ago. I got, I placed at impromptu speaking there after going through semis and through finals and finally was able to place at the State Tournament in Salina. And I'm happy to be here.
We also just last weekend won the Acacia State Championship Tournament, which we're all excited about. And these are some of the students who were a part of that state championship team. We also are competing in the NCFL and the NSDA National Tournament and just came back last weekend from competing in the National Individual Events Tournament of Champions. People know Sumner Academy Debate and Forensics and it's because we have some amazing students. So I'm going to let them introduce their events and what they competed in.
Hello, my name is Ashlyn Freeman. I am your Dramatic Interpretation Champion from State. I compete, I qualified for NITOC, NSDA, and NCFL. Basically, all three of the national competitions and yeah.
Hi again, I'm Jacayla again from Sumner Academy. I'm a freshman. I competed at State and I also will be going to the NCFL National Tournament in Oratorical Declamation.
Hey, I'm Simone Folsom. I'm a junior. I am the current impromptu State Champion. But I also compete in foreign extemporaneous speaking and I will be going to the NSDA and NCFL tournaments this summer.
My name's Alexis Corral. I competed in Lincoln Douglas Debate at State and I'll be going to NCFL.
Hello, I'm Caden Robbins. I competed in Lincoln Douglas Debate at State and I will be attending NCFL in next week.
Hi, I'm Eunice Panama. I competed at State and took third as in DI. I qualified for NCFL and NSDA Nationals.
Hi, I'm Kaia Olden. I attend, okay, sorry, I attend Sumner Academy. And I went to State in Duo Interpretation with Savan. And we broke into semifinals. We also attended NITOC last weekend in Omaha, Nebraska.
Hi, my name is Savan McLean and I'm a junior at Sumner. And I placed sixth at the State Tournament in Salina, Kansas about two weeks ago. And I was a semifinalist with my partner Kaia there as well. And I competed in the NITOC Tournament in Nebraska last weekend.
Thank you, thank you so much. Shake your hand.
Congratulations again to all the students and all the parents and all the friends and family. I believe we're at the Community Updates. Caring for Kids Network update Nancy Mitchell, Executive Director. Good evening.
Well, good evening and I just want to say first of all, what a night to be here. This is amazing. Congratulations to all these students and to all of you. It just inspires hope in my heart. It's just amazing. So thank you. It's good to be here. We appreciate a few minutes to share an update on Caring for Kids. I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with Caring for Kids and what we do in the school district. We have some packets. We have a little present for you. We thought it might be helpful for you to have the information in your hand and then you can take a look at it later. Did everyone get one?
I think so.
Are we good?
We're good, thank you.
So it's so good to be here this evening. We're very grateful to be able to serve this school district. My name is Nancy Mitchell. I'm the Director of the Caring for Kids Network. And we are an asset-based community engagement program that is here in the district. We're actually, we've been here since 2014. We're a network of churches, businesses, and civic groups serving local schools in collaboration. How many of you have heard of Caring for Kids? Okay, so you're a little bit familiar with us. That's great. I'm going to go through this really quickly because we want to share a couple of stories with you as well. Our vision is for all children to have hope and the opportunity to reach their highest potential. And I think we're seeing that tonight. We're just seeing amazing kids with dreams and they're pursuing those dreams in a variety of ways. Our mission in that is to mobilize community organizations and collaborative partnership with the local school, with the neighborhood schools to inspire hope and help children impact their world, which is ever-changing, isn't it? It's an ever-changing world that they're going to compete in and contribute to. So we grew out of a realization in 2013, we actually started as a volunteer organization. And we grew out of a realization that we all care about our kids. The schools, the businesses, the faith community. We share a common heart for the children of our community. We want to see them thrive. We want to see them succeed, right? And so what we saw were a lot of great programs, but we thought there needed to be someone who would be a neutral convener to bring some of the community organizations together and to serve in those programs and other initiatives. Somebody set up here, there are so many people in the community working together to lift up our students. I thought that should be our mission statement. That was an amazing statement. And that is what we agree and we so much want to be a part of that. And we feel like we are here in the Kansas City, Kansas School District and we're so grateful to be here. So how do we do this? Well, there's four things about Caring for Kids, if you don't remember anything else, these four things. We're a neutral convener, so we bring the community together. We do it through a process. We don't bring a program. We don't bring an initiative. We do it through a process. It's a simple four-step process that engages and facilitates that collaboration. And then the number one priority for us is the goals of the principal. So everything that we do, our process is centered around one simple question. How can we help you achieve your goals in your school? So that is our, the four things, the takeaway. I love this African proverb, "If you want to go fast, go alone." I'm one of those people who likes to go fast. And so I, I'm kind of a busy person. But if you want to go far, you go together. And it requires, you know, teamwork. And I see that here. It's just very evident tonight. A lot of teamwork, a lot of people contributing. And then that's sustainability. You go together and it's long-term. So that's what we're after. Our contextual four-step process, we have a preparation phase. We met with the leadership here in January, I think it was, of 2014, Lisa, something like that. And we talked about, the district is actually the one that gives us our direction. We don't come in and say, we want to do this school or that school or whatever. We come in and we just really have open hands. We say, here's our process. We engage our staff to facilitate that process, but you give us direction. Where do you want us to be? And what are your goals for community partnerships and how we can serve you? So that's the preparation phase. The connection phase is we bring everybody together. We do this, we did this in the beginning at a big round table where we brought the principals together with existing partners and new partners that we brought. And they brought them all together around a table. The principal has an opportunity to share the dream in their heart. And have you ever met a principal that doesn't have a dream in their heart for their students? They just, it's amazing. And when they share that dream and they bring those partners into it, it just really starts the partnership off right. And we're all focused on the right thing and that's those kids and their families. So that connection event, we do now as a kickoff event every year. We have a kickoff event in the district every year. This year, we're adding a little feature to the kickoff event. And that is, we've gone through some training and some strategic planning and we are instituting something we call School Connect. And we're going to bring new potential partners to the kickoff as well. So we're going to do the same things that we've always done with the principals and their existing partners to begin working on their plan for the school year. But then we're going to bring in new partners and they get to hear the stories. And they get to hear from the superintendent. And they get to see how partnerships can work. And they can say to themselves, well, I want to do this too. So we thought it was a great, great event that we didn't want to waste it on just one thing. We thought we can expand this and bring in new people. So we're going to be doing that this year. So hopefully, we'll have four or five tables of potentially new community organizations that can serve the schools. So we're going to be doing that. That's our kickoff, our connection event. The implementation is we help facilitate the collaboration and build those action plans around the goals of the school with projects underneath. We ask principals really to have two or more goals. We want to be successful and excellent in what we do. So let's select what's most important to you, that these partners can bring resources and volunteers too. So that's what they do primarily is bring resources and volunteers. We really felt strongly that some of the resources and the volunteers, the manpower that is needed, and you see that here tonight, is just right around the corner. It's across the street. It's, you know, down the road. It's these community, it's the banks, it's the faith community, it's, you know, nonprofits, it's all kinds of folks. So that's what we do. This is our, these are our key leading indicators really. It's just the best way for me to describe it. If our process is working properly, we should be generating resources and volunteers, right? So we measure this every year. We do it a couple of times a year. And we're actually going to an online metric tool. And you will be able to log into that and see exactly what's going on in the district, what the goals are, you know, any school, who the partners are. So you can check it anytime that you want to. So we're really excited. We worked on it all last year. So we're really excited about that. So we're in seven school districts. We have been in eight. We are completed with our work in the Olathe School District, so we pulled our metrics out. I'm serving on their Adopt a School Task Force in Olathe. We actually started there in about 2008, '09, something like that, as a volunteer organization. We've helped them partner all of their schools. They have one business and one faith at every school. But we're in Center School District, Randview. We just added them last year. Hickman Mills, Kansas City, Kansas, Kansas City, Missouri, Raytown Quality Schools, and Shawnee Mission. Those are the districts that we currently serve. We have a staff of five that work on this, that are on the ground. So we are in 87 schools. We pulled out the 36 in Olathe. We currently have 360 community partners engaged citywide. We have 177 faith partners, 94 business, 89 civic. And then you see these key leading indicators of those partners actually generated those outputs. Those volunteer mentors, those are projects that support the principal's goals. Every one of those projects represents an answer to a question. How can we help you? So those are, those are answers to that question. And then the children that have served indirectly, that would be, you know, the, we kind of go by Maslow's hierarchy of needs. You know, the kids need these things before they can even begin to sense school connectedness or belonging. And so we look at that, you know, things like backpacks or clothing closets or whatever it might be. And then the mentors are one of the big things. Most of the principals are really interested in having lunch buddies, tutors, et cetera, in the school. So that's, and that's currently 2,557 children that have been served. So over $800,000 is invested by partners and in kind or direct. That's just what we've been able to track. Now I'm going to have Raquel come up here. Raquel Lara is our Partnership Director here in Kansas City, Kansas for Caring for Kids. She's the one that facilitates our community partnerships here. And she's going to give you the update on Kansas City, Kansas.
Thank you Nancy. Good evening. It's great to be here, meet every one of you. Dr. Prowse, thank you. Yes, as Nancy was saying, I have the privilege to be able to serve and oversee the schools that are here in the Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools. I also oversee the Center School District. So there's 23 schools that I have the opportunity to go and visit and help facilitate this process. But for the Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, we are currently serving 16 schools, which equals to 92 community partners engaged currently. And I'll share with you a little bit what that really looks like in just a minute. We have 43 faith partners, 22 businesses, and 27, excuse me, civic organizations. And you can see the numbers there as far as what has been invested by the partners. But what really puts a smile on my face is going into the schools and sitting around and watching the principals share their heart and their goals for that school year and seeing the partners come around and think of ways on how they can help meet those goals. And that's the exciting piece because we know that that's a trickle, will be trickle effect on the students. In your packet, there's a tab that has the update tab on it. And it has, if you have some time later on, you can read into some of these stories that we have been able to pull and share about some of the things that have come out of these partnerships, like after-school programs, a girls' mentoring program, parent resource fairs. And just recently, one of the goals that was identified by one of our schools here in the Kansas City, Kansas School District, Francis Willard Elementary School, was to help with the attendance factor. We want these kids to be in school. Obviously, we want these kids to be in school. This is where they learn and we want them to be successful in life. And so that, the partners around the table worked really hard providing different means and ways in which to help the students understand the importance of being in school. And also, they did a couple of party, attendance parties, incentives and so forth. And as a result of that, that school has met their goal. And so we see the importance of having that community. So I just wanted to share how important it is, how we appreciate the support and we want to continue to serve as we move forward. So thank you for your time. I'll leave Nancy back with you.
And there's, there's some stories in there in the impact section. So we really gave you a lot of information in this packet. We have a system for sustainability, which there's not the time to unpack that here, obviously. And it will be some reading for you when you're, if you're interested to really go into the details of it. But we do have a plan for sustainability that is a three-year plan because it is obvious that with a team of five, we are not going to be able to serve all the schools if we are constantly in the schools every day, you know, maintaining those partnerships. First year, yes. Second year, we begin to shape a process of equipping that partnership for sustainability going forward. By the end of the third year, we should be able to release that partnership and be able to move on to another school and become more of a coach or more equipping. And so we are hiring an equipping director this year. We're adding to our staff. We will have a sixth person who will be dedicated to that purpose for equipping, creating videos, training, webinars, whatever. And a big part of that is going to be helping our organizations, the community organizations mobilize and create a culture of serving and generosity. And so we're really excited about that. We already have the curriculum lined out and we just need to put the person in place. So very excited about that. You can learn more about that in the sustainability section. I did want to point out to you at the end, we have our kickoff agenda. There are a few things that, to make these partnerships really successful, there are a few things that, that when we work together, it really accelerates the partnership and makes them stronger. And one of those is the presence of the superintendent and even all of you. If you can make it to the kickoff, we would so love to have you there. Our board's going to be coming and facilitating those tables of the new potential partners. We're really excited about that. Your support means a lot to us when you're there. It means that it matters, that these community partners matter and we know that they do to you. And so we put that agenda in here. We're doing it a little bit differently. We're going to have little breakout sessions and we're pretty excited about that. If you look in the very back, there is a little circular diagram here. And this is what we would ideally want to have. We want a civic organization. We want a faith partner. We want a business partner. We want parent representation. And so we're working towards that model for sustainability because all those factors contribute something unique and different to that school partnership. So the other thing that we do ask of districts is if we could possibly have some time with your principals to set them up for success at the beginning of the year before the kickoff so we can help them with the goal setting and talk about the kickoff and the things that we're going to be doing in the coming year and what the resources are. And then they can ask their questions. So I think that's all of our time. I did want to share this last, that's our staff up there. We have the staff of five. We've had the same staff in our sixth year. We're almost finished with our sixth year. We've had the same staff for the six years. So we added Portia a couple of years ago. And then we have some volunteer staff that helps us with connection in the community. And then if you see the staff of tomorrow, they're down below. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Do you have a date for the kickoff?
I'm sorry, what?
Do you have a date for the kickoff?
You are the ones that give us the date. So we'll be working with Lisa. We're meeting with her on Thursday for a date. And we'll get that to you as soon as we can.
Thank you very much. Questions?
Again, I just want to thank you. We love the school district. We really do.
Thank you very much. We're now at the Community Comment location. Deborah Vasquez, Sumner Academy, topic Student Curriculum. Are you here? Welcome again.
Hi. First, I just want to say, like, thank you for having me here. I didn't know that a student could do this, you know, to talk about, like, my concerns or things that I'm just thinking about as a student, you know? I'm kind of passionate towards, like, knowing what I can do to help my community or what I can do to help others. But I love doing that. So thank you. So I want to talk about, we're being introduced to the dual credit now at my school. I go to Sumner Academy. What I kind of want to talk about is how they're telling us that we have to sign up, you know? I'm going to be a senior next year. I finished all the classes I had to do. I just have my mandatory senior classes and a whole bunch of electives. So I was just thinking, like, if I can use my spare time that I have in the school to further my education and prepare myself more for college, like, I wouldn't be able to do that, you know? So they told us that we could be able to choose a study hall and work on that on our computers and our laptops. But, you know, it'd be kind of limited because the professors from the school, they'd have to send either someone to our school or a teacher who is qualified to teach about it. And I was just thinking that that kind of limits the amount of students. If they want to take a certain course, there's only a certain amount of kids who are able to do that. So I was talking with some of my administrators about transporting to the school itself, which I know is a topic still being discussed, and we completely understand. But I kind of think that being able to do that will not only be able to allow more students to participate for dual credit, but also give us the experience and the firsthand, like, experience of being out of college, you know? Having that responsibility of showing up on time, being on campus, and becoming familiar with that feeling because it's all new, you know? So I have one more thing I had to talk to you about, if that's okay. I am very grateful, and I'm utterly grateful for the education I have and the opportunity and all the opportunities I've been given. But as many of my peers at my school and other students in the District 500, I'm first generation, so this is all new to me, new to my parents, too. One thing that I think is greatly celebrated and I love about our district is how diverse we are. I love being able to, like, we went to New York. Thank you for letting us go to New York. That was awesome. We were the only diverse school there. And I felt so proud to be representing, you know, all of our community. But being from a diverse background also means we need to embrace that. And what I'm trying to say with that is, being a first-generation student, it's kind of hard going through, like, applying to colleges and scholarships and, like, all these things that are so new to not just me, but my parents as well. And growing up with having to kind of fend for myself, you know? My parents were learning English, and, you know, they're new to this, too. I was just thinking of how we could make that easier for students who are of first generation. I know that, I have two older siblings, but my oldest brother's going to Police Academy. My second brother is going into the Air Force. And so I'll be the first of my family to attend college and stay there, you know? And like, go and focus on my career. So I know I'll be able to be of a resource for my little brother, but there's other people who probably won't have that resource. So I was just thinking of, what can we do to be able to allow other students to have that resource? To be able to look somewhere, to not feel so intimidated, to not have, you know, their high school career be something that is so scary, but rather, you know, like, a cool experience, you know? So I was, I kind of, I had an idea in mind that I would like to suggest, you know? It's up to you guys, of course. But I was thinking, like, maybe we could have student volunteers who have graduated from our district, like, that are of a diverse background. Like, they know, they've been through what I've been through. And if they would like to volunteer just sometime out of their week, like, once in a while, to come to the school and be able to talk to the students, like, be a resource for them, like, provide an email or something to just kind of guide us? Because, of course, like, there's always been that stigma of going to, like, being called down to the office, even if it's just, like, "You forgot your ID." Like, you're scared, you know? Like, the office is kind of scary. So I think students would be more comfortable if it was a student, you know, someone who went through what they went through. And if we could be able to do that, like, that'd be so cool, you know? I would volunteer, of course. So, yeah, that's just what I wanted to say. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Deborah, before you, Deborah, I met Deborah at the Film Festival. Her and her peers are in a media event that we sponsor through the district as part of Saturday Academy. And I met Deborah, and she said, "I have so much I want to tell you," when she found out I was a board member. But she didn't know that she could even come talk to us. I said, "You are so resourceful. You should tell my peers because we would be happy to hear you." And she said, "Oh, my goodness, this is so exciting." So I want to thank you, Deborah, because many people may not understand when you have first-generation parents, they don't understand or may not understand what it's like to interpret for them. If you're going on to college, how do you even know when you're not familiar with the culture? How do you know how a district works if you're not familiar with how to talk to a district? So I appreciate you being an advocate for your peers and for your parents because our parents, they love you guys and they trust us with you. So I want to thank you for being bold. I know you said you were nervous, but you did good. I want to thank you for being bold enough to come up and speak and then tell us your concerns so we can continue to talk about it. So thank you.
Thank you for listening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deborah, maybe this is something the foundation can help with. So we'll talk.
Thank you.
That's nice.
Annie Harvey, Education in KCKPS. Annie Harvey? Annie Harvey? All right. Helen Davis Moore, Topic Special Ed.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Helen Davis Moore, and I have several questions that I would like to bring to the board. One would be about the Special Edge Director and the coordinators that work with Special Edge. My child has been a student outside of KCK Public Schools for the last two years. And we have an IEP that requires that Children's Mercy would think she would be better with that para that would help her. She also has a waiver, which is a waiver for SED. She's dementia. She is disturbed with behavior because of her emotions. I have asked for a hearing to get a letter from the school district saying why she could not receive a para. And I was told that the district that we actually go to school in contacted the Special Edge Coordinator here. And she said that would never happen. So I went back to Children's Mercy. I had them to write up her evaluation for her behavior. She is actually doing excellent since we've moved out of KCK. She was put in several classes that disturbed her, and we have that in writing. And they still would not move her out of those classes. I have worked with the Special Edge Co-op for years, and we cannot get anywhere. We're deadlocked. We end up having more problems. So I would like a liaison, someone that is totally out of the district, to be able to sit in and supervise this because my daughter's entitled to a public free education, which is helping her get through school with a para. And with that need, I believe that Children's Mercy, who is a very credible hospital, who's been working with her from birth to now, would be able to make that decision, not the board of Special Edge, but the people who actually see her, the people that actually get to know her all day. She has not had any problems in the last two years in school. We have had great attendance, great rapport. But we still have a deadlock with the board here, which is the special education. And I don't see this changing. I don't know what's going to happen. I'm just asking for someone totally on the outside of this board to sit in so that we can get services and either move us out of, wind out, so that we can get the services that we need because apparently, we're not getting anywhere. The malicious things that has happened to my child and me are just damaging to us. And we would just like to be a normal person going to school so that she can get the services that she needs. That is my request. I don't know what it's going to take. I don't know what's going to happen. But I'm willing to do whatever it takes. I'm here today against my doctor's orders that I'm not supposed to be on my knees. And I do apologize, Dr. Wind, that I took your parking space, but my knees are killing me.
I don't have a parking space.
But I just want you to know that we are entitled to an IEP that is workable for the child that has the special needs, not the district who wants to maliciously hurt us. So therefore, with that being said, I have worked with everybody from top to bottom and people that are in different districts. And we just want a fair exchange. My daughter no longer lives in the District of 500. We just want the school that she's attending now to be able to get the things, the tools that she needs to be a better student there. If that's possible, then I'm great.
Do you want to direct her to something? I know we don't, but. Our Special Ed person will respond to you. Can we have a timeframe within the next three days?
Okay. Can that response be in writing? Because I don't do phone calls with them.
Is that it? That's a yes.
Thank you.
You have her name and address? Okay. Thank you. Now, report to the superintendent.
That's at the Kansas City Board of Education. Accept reports on the KCK Public Library budget as submitted by Carol Levers, Director of Libraries, and is recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening, Dr. Wind. Dr. Faust, before I start with this, I just want to show you, right in front of you is a signed copy of the Emma Till book we had last night. We had a fantastic author come from KU, one of KU professors. And he signed a copy for each of you. Also, I just added in, we're going to have, we received an award from Penguin Random House Award. Kansas City, Kansas Public Library was named runner-up for the Penguin Random House Award for Innovation Through Adversity Award. And this award is, the Kansas City Public Library has been named this award because they were supported by Penguin Random House Foundation. And they recognize U.S. libraries and staff who overcome adversities and create lasting innovative community services programs that successfully inspire and connect with new readers. The library was awarded the runner-position nationwide. And they're sending us a $1,000 check for new materials for the stories on the bus that we had. So I just wanted to share that. Okay. These are our five libraries, including our mobile libraries. And just to go through our strategic priorities that we've completed this past year. Our strategic priority number one was to improve service features and collections to enhance patron experience. We've greatly expanded that. We've completed the fleet, mobile fleet. We've enhanced programming. We've added more programming to our libraries. We are the nation-leading digital lending program. Innovation Through Adversity Award that I've just shared with you. Our strategic priority number two was to provide staff the support and structure they need to give excellent service. We've added more training for our staff this past year. The third priority we had for you last year was provide clean, safe, attractive, accessible, comfortable facilities. We are now adding a new radio frequency ID. That's what they call the RFID equipment. That will be launched this next month. New carpets in two of our facilities. The west was remodeled and updated. All public computer labs in the libraries. Our fourth priority was to provide a unified voice for KCKPL. And we've centralized all social media accounts. And we've created a weekly sharing, talking points for all staff so that everybody knows exactly what's happening throughout the whole system. Doesn't matter whether you're in West, whether you're in Maine, whether you're at Turner, or we have the same message. And we saw an increase in news coverage for KCKPL. Our 2018-19 budget, we have four columns. The first one is the budget that you voted on this last year. The second one is the adjusted budget. And as you can see, we had to adjust our maintenance because our west, the cost came higher than, while we were doing the renovations because we had issues with our security cameras. And that wasn't budgeted, but we had to adjust that for the new cameras. The data processing, that is going up because of our refresh that we are busy with right now. So we increased the data. Our equipment, that's the self-checkout stations. And we're waiting for a bibliotheca to implement that. Other than that, everything is on target. And you can see the actual column is on the last column. And the third one is the encumbered, that we still have to encumber before the end in our fourth quarter. Any questions?
So this is 18-19.
Yes, ma'am.
So. So, I guess I'm asking, what do you, we need to be working on 19-20?
No, not yet. What was asked is that she present, she brings forth the budget. So, this is what we're working on, she's working on this.
She's working from this.
From this budget.
All right.
We are not ready to present the, we'll present all those in a budget meeting, not in a separate meeting.
This doesn't need to be approved? This is already approved?
Right, this is already approved. You wanted, well, you, the board, wanted more knowledge and an update. And so, that's what she's giving, it's an update on the budget.
And hopefully, when we do the work, it's kinda like, we'll see some of the math. Because the question is, I guess the question is, you know, how many personnel you have and things like that. But we'll, we'll see all that later. Okay. Any other questions from?
You actually won't, you won't see that. That's not how, we'll talk about that when we get to the budget. But there's a budget process, but it doesn't, it doesn't provide that.
That's why we have to.
It won't provide that. Okay.
We'll get there. Thank you.
If I may, I'd like to introduce our new Assistant Director for the Public Libraries, Michelle McCauley. She just started a couple of weeks ago.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I accept the Kansas City Board of Education accept proposal for professional services with Garcia Architect to provide preliminary plans for updating the main library as submitted by Carol Levers, Director of Libraries. And it's recommended by myself Superintendent of Schools.
I'd like to call Mr. Rafael Garcia to the podium.
Thank you, Carol. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We provided a proposal based on about a year and two months ago, an initial visit with, with the Dr. Mathers and Doug Clements initially. And subsequently had a couple of meetings with Carol and David. And we provided a proposal. And I'd be willing to answer any questions that you all might have regarding such.
I had a question, cause we received a different amount than the amount that you have, that we're presenting here today. So, I was just wondering.
It's my fault. I accidentally attached the first proposal. They, I'll get you a copy of the one that they revised.
Okay, cause I wanted to make sure we're voting on the right thing. And I didn't mean any harm, I was just wondering.
Certainly, I understand.
Okay.
Which one's on there?
154.
Just for clarity, while we're waiting on that, you're gonna provide us with our three options? If we renovate, if we expand, we build a new one? You'll have all those different plans?
Absolutely, yes.
Have you had a chance already to look at the facility?
We have.
Since last March?
Yes, ma'am.
Recently, okay.
Do we wanna talk about our observations when we went, or no?
If you like.
I just saw that there were updates that were needed. I'm not an expert to know how much it would cost or what have you, other than what was presented, you know, last year. But you can, I could clearly see that there's room for improvements.
Very, very good. Thank you, Doctor.
Yeah, I was, I was, went on Monday, I think. And the good news is that the roof is good.
That is good news.
That's the good news. But again, some of the updates that were, were pointed out, you know, included, which you already know, like heating and cooling and insulation. So, hopefully, everyone will have an opportunity to visit, so that when we do have a broader discussion, we all be on the same page.
Well, it's almost required. So, thank you, Doctor.
I appreciate that.
You will have public forums to interview the public?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Community involvement is critical.
Have you had a chance to talk to the unified government?
No, ma'am. I believe that was, the intention was until I got under contract would that happen. So, I'd have my marching orders, so to speak.
Normally, how long does it take for the process to go, for you to do this?
It varies, but there's a, the, as you see in front of you, there's the process of public information, information gathering. And that's really a little bit of a wild card in terms of time, because you go and listen, we go and listen. We come back, we assimilate, then we go back to the public and we say, well, this is what we heard you say. Is this correct? And so, there's that, that's a time monitoring process. And it's a little bit of a trick sometimes, making sure you get consensus and getting good crowds to show up. Otherwise, the participation is meaningless if it's, you don't have a strong participation. So, there's, there's that effort. And of course, the design effort, it still takes several months to go through a design process. So, it's programming, data collection, research, working with the public, the design process, and then assimilation, putting it all together. And then coming back, this is what we understood you to say. And this is, these are options of products and their respective costs and variances. I, I can't put a timeframe of exactness to it, but it's a good part of a calendar year, probably three good seasons. So, maybe by, before winter, we're gonna have some good news.
And what's, what is your thoughts of how would you disseminate the, the information to get, get public input?
We'll be working together with, with Carol to determine how the dissemination process goes out, to make sure we have a blanket and we cover.
Right.
Everybody. It's, it's foolish to go through a process like this and have holes.
Correct.
So, that, that's just, that's, as long as I've been doing this for 22 years, th- those are errors that should be avoided.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments? Okay.
I make a motion that, do we need to make a motion that, that we accept the proposal as presented by Garcia Architecture to move forward with the professional services for preliminary plans for updating the main library?
Second. Been moved into seconded, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay, motion passed. Thank you, we look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much, as do I. Goodbye, have a good evening.
Thank you.
I accept the Kansas City Board of Education accept as an informational item, the Capers Audit Report is submitted by Dennis Covington, Chief Financial Officer, and is recommended by myself Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening. We had a audit on our Capers contributions to the state. There was three pretty much findings that occurred that has caused us to owe $586,000 to the Capers Retirement Fund. The major one was when we hire temporary employees, we have to monitor to make sure that they do not reach the 29, go over the 29 and have hours per week. Cause when we hire them as temps, we don't do a Capers contribution. But when that tips over, they go back and recalculate what you should have paid. We had some errors in calculating when we hire retirees. There's a certain formula for the amount of salaries that can be charged Capers on. And the third one was, oh, we had some independent contractors that was deemed employees that we never paid Capers on. So, those three, in total, it was a five-year audit from 2012 through 2016. And as I fore stated, it came to a total of about $586,000 that we need to contribute to the Capers Fund. But as of the end of the audit and the payment of the check, all findings have been addressed and resolved. This is just for your approval?
Clarification, how, moving forward, how can we prevent these types of things from occurring?
We will be monitoring these type situations. And when you see the budget for next year, there is a person that you'll see added to the budget that will be in charge of this.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I make a motion that we approve and accept the Capers Audit Report.
Second. Moved into seconded, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay, thank you.
Thank you.
I accept the Kansas City Board of Education accept as an informational item, the report from the 2019 Summer School Plan is submitted by Darrell Garrison, Project Manager, Alan King, Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Kim Shaw, Executive Director, Dr. Alicia Miguel, Executive Director, and Dr. Eva Tucker Neville's Instructional Improvement Officer, as recommended by myself, Charles Fowles, Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening, Madam President, Board Members, and Dr. Faust. We'll talk a little bit about the Summer School Plan for 2019. The high school program will start on June 3rd through June 27th, Monday through Thursday only. Students will arrive from 7:30 to 12:30. Breakfast at 7:30, lunch at 12:00. Enrollment criteria is credit recovery. Location will be Wyandotte High School. And the feeder schools will be Slagle, Harmon, Washington, and a few students from Sunburne. Also, JDC will be operational for some of our students that are incarcerated. And we have a few students that will be attending summer school at JDC, but everything will be at JDC. The middle school level, summer school will start June 3rd through June 27th, Monday through Thursday. Students will arrive from eight, uh, 10, from eight to 12:00. Breakfast at 8:00, lunch at 11:30. Enrollment criteria is based on student performance on state and local assessments in math and reading. The host sites will be Arrowhead Middle School. Feeder School will be Coronado and West. Another host site would be Argentine Middle School. Feeder School would be Rosedale. Host site Eisenhower Middle School. Feeder School would be Northwest and the Ivanobie Camp. And then Central Middle School operate on its own. At the elementary level, will start June 3rd to 27th, Monday through Thursday only. Students will attend from 9:00 to 1:00. Breakfast at 9:00, lunch at 12:30. Enrollment criteria is based on student performance on the state and local assessment in math and reading. Host site Emerson and Feeder will be kids' own. Eugene Ware's host site, Feeder School Welborn. Francis Willer operate on his own. Frank Russian will be host site hosting John F. Fifth and T.A. Edison. Grant will be a host site hosting Douglas and Banniger. John F. Kennedy will be a host site hosting Hazel Grove. Lindberg would operate on his own. Mark Twain will host McKinley and Carruthers. New Chelsea will host ESL migrant program. New Stanley will operate on his own. Noble Prentice will host Silver City. Stony Point North will host Stony Point South. William Allen White will host Qunderell and Parker. And White Church will host Bethel and Cloud Height. And Whittier will host M.E. Pearson. Early childhood will start June 3rd through the 27th, Monday through Thursday. Students will attend from 8:30 to 12:30. Breakfast at 8:45, lunch at 12:00. Enrollment criteria incoming kindergarteners who need additional instructional support to ensure kindergarten readiness. Location will be North Central Office. And then the special ed program will run from June 3rd to 27th, Monday through Thursdays. Students will attend from 8:30 to 11:00 and from 2:00 to 2:30. Breakfast at 8:30, lunch at 12:00. Enrollment criteria as determined by the IEP of the students. Any questions?
I have one. With William Allen White hosting Qunderell and Parker, what effect will the closing of West Middle School, or is there gonna be any demolition that's gonna be taking place at that time during that month?
That William Allen White, and that, I don't know.
Will that affect the students being in close proximity if it is going to happen?
All of these sites were given approval by our facilities people.
Okay.
We wanted to stay out of there. As a matter of fact, that's one reason why Northwest is going to Eisenhower.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Garrison, I have a question.
It says that students will be given an opportunity for credit recovery to learn or improve academic skills as well as academic enrichment. Now, is this only kids who need to have credit recovery, or can other children go to summer school?
I'm sorry, are you talking at which level, ma'am?
The, why is important for our kids? It says that students will be given an opportunity for credit recovery to learn or improve academic skills as well as academic enrichment. Is this summer school only for kids who are behind, or can other children enroll also?
Well, at the high school level is credit recovery.
Okay.
And then at the elementary, middle school level, you're gonna have a diversity of students attending. And it'd be based mainly on their academic performance.
But if we have a parent who wants their child, you know, they're okay in school and they want their child to have some summer schooling, can they enroll them?
Summer school wouldn't be, that's not an op, summer school is for those who are not meeting the mark and need remediation. So, if a parent, it's not for, and also just it is not for babysitting.
No.
And so, it's actually for students who are not meeting the state standards. And so, there's a criteria that the school is using that's based on the, the student performance.
Okay, so it's, it's only for kids who are, are behind in their performance?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, have the parents already been notified? Is that what the letter is?
That's always, that's always the, the purpose of summer school. But this letter, this is just based off of what she's reading from the, from what I just read.
Have the parents been notified based upon test scores already that their child is going to summer school, or?
Yes.
Okay, so, so it's, it won't be a surprise, like, awesome.
And it's Monday through Thursday, correct?
Yes, correct. Thank you.
I make a mo, do we have to?
We have something else to discuss.
Oh, okay.
I, I, I don't have a question about your program.
Okay.
I like the way it's set up, but it was brought to our attention by some principals that was concerned. And I don't know if you would answer this question, or I need to direct it to the superintendent, about the pay for principals. They didn't feel that it was equitable or fair. Again, if they asked, we should be able to ask and ask for some clarity.
I'm glad you're asking. So, in previous years, they've been paid $250 a day. And that is, some of that is during their contracted days. And so, then teachers were paid at $20 and 72 cents, which is not actually their pay rate. So, we had administrators who were taking home checks for $5,500 for the weeks of summer school. So, what we've done is an adjusted, so if you're there, we're giving those administrators that's a stipend versus, because that's your school, that's your students. And then if they choose not to do it, which if they're outside of contract, there are people who have, there are teachers and there are ICs who have their certification as principals. And we will be more than. and we will be more than happy to pay them the rate. But for them to receive a check for $5,000 and teachers were not paid at the same rate, that...well, not the same rate, but not being paid at theirs, and that's not actually the rate. So we did the math, and so at a person who was making five...what was it, $250 a day, that came in at a salary around $100,000 plus, and that was more than what their salary was for the year. So that's what that is all about. They were making more than what they were making as a principal or an administrator.
So just for clarity...
Yes.
Okay. Part of the time that they had was their regular time. In addition, I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding.
Anytime you're in the building, it doesn't matter. Your contracted time is time that you're there with those students. You can't double dip. So you're an administrator up until your contracted time, so I can't pay you for time to do two jobs. I have to pay you for the job that you're doing. So if you're an administrator, let's say the...what's the last day for our high schools? June 24th, summer school's last day is June 27th.
Well, that's what I didn't see.
That's for high school. But right, that's for high school, so...
To make sure for clarity.
We're making...
Okay.
I'm legally responsible for this budget.
Okay.
And I'm not going to make...I'm not going to overpay people. The teacher's budget, that one ends elementary, theirs ends sooner. So we have to make sure that we're in compliance and that I'm held legally responsible for this. So what we need for those leaders to do is go back and read their contract. They're on there. If they are in those schools, they're responsible for those students. It matters not if it's summer school, if it's a program, you are there to work Monday through Thursday, and that's what your job is. And as superintendent, I get to reassign, redirect them during those times. So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty then.
Was there other questions? I make a motion that we accept the report on the 2019 summer school program.
Seconded. Been moved in seconded, discussion. Excuse me, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passed. Ready? We're now on the consent agenda. I'd like to set aside H and I. Any other items? Any other board member would like to set aside from the consent agenda?
Yeah, I'd like to set aside F.
Okay. Any other items? All right, then I need a motion to accept the consent agenda minus F, like Frank, H like Happy, and I like Inc.
I make a motion. Second.
Been moved in seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passed. Would you like to discuss F now, Mr. Brown?
Well, my only concern is, I know...I understand that this is an on-call roofing repair service contract. I just need to know, after the contractor is notified, how much time does he have? Is there a...a...a limit on the amount of time it takes him to respond to that request?
This is going to be managed by the Facilities Department. As far as the service levels go, you know, I don't totally know what the...and I'm Wayne Correll. I'm the director of purchasing, if you remember, ma'am. Sorry about that.
Could you speak a little bit closer into the mic, please?
Okay. This contract is for on-call services for small roofing repairs here and there. If we have an emergency, they're supposed to be here, be to the building. I think it's within four hours.
Within four hours?
Within four hours, I believe, so.
Okay. I didn't see that anyplace in the contract.
Right. It isn't...it isn't in there. But the service levels are set up.
If it's not in the contract, how can we hold them to that?
Well, it's just the general...well, there's a short form service agreement that's going to be signed, but it's just for their...it'll provide the service levels, it'll provide the payment terms, things like that. And we can set it forth in that agreement, and I can bring it back to you if you like.
Okay. There was one more thing. I guess I would say just the timelines. And the contract period is for five years?
It's a one-year contract with up to four renewals.
With four, okay.
We can terminate for convenience or for cause, if we have to.
That was my next question.
Yes.
Okay. I'm good.
Okay. Thank you.
Want to make a motion to accept? Mr. Brown?
Well, yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the premier contracting bid for roofing, for on-call roofing repair services, as outlined in the bid dated May 14th.
I second. Been moved in seconded, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passed. F...excuse me, H and I deal with property, and I'd like Mr. Goheen to explain.
Sure.
What's going on there?
Let me talk about H first. You recall, we had the old school down on 813 Barnett property that we sold and disposed of back in October 2015. Probably the board members that are on here don't remember that. But the issue that's cropped up there, the property owners actually in a foreclosure proceeding, the bank is foreclosure on the piece of property. They're claiming, as part of their title insurance, that the deed that we gave to them back in 2015 did not include the alleyways that are attached to the property. There's an alley that cuts through the school between the school and the parking lot and the playground. We don't think we even own it, but to avoid any kind of claim against the district, we are going to deed the alleyway over to the property owner to the extent we have any ownership interest, which we do not, but it cleans up everything from a title perspective purpose. So that's why we're recommending that you agree to deed the alleyways to the extent we own them to the property owner. That's what that one is.
Thank you. Questions? All right, then I move to accept H.
Second.
Been moved in seconded to accept H, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passed. I likewise?
I is our notorious railroad line through Northwest Middle School that we talked about, I think, a couple of weeks, well, months ago now. And originally, the Union Pacific Railroad, which is the technical owner of the railroad right-of-way, was asking, I can't remember what the total price, I think it was like $15,000 plus costs and expenses to sell us that right-of-way that obviously hasn't been there for...since the school was built. We have continued to talk to them and have gotten them down to $5,000 to have that right-of-way eliminated and deeded back to the school district, which means we'll have clean title and won't ever have to deal with this again. So it's our recommendation, we'd clean it up and just close it out so that you have clean title and don't ever have to worry about this at any point in the future. You know, it's...it's an annoyance and an inconvenience and a little bit of money, but it cleans it up, and it's cheaper than it would cost if we went into court to try and get rid of it.
Were there any railroad ties still there?
No.
Okay, that's good.
No. That thing's been gone for a long time. I don't even know...if you look on a map, it's kind of interesting. I think that...is there a map attached? There might be a map attached to it that's sort of a aerial photo. If not, I could circulate one so you guys could see it if you want. And it shows, basically, you know how Northwest is? The rail line goes down...it used to apparently go down the hill, and it goes right through houses that are built down there in that neighborhood that's to the...what would that be, the west of Northwest? So obviously, it's been gone for a long time.
I was concerned about contamination.
Oh, sure.
Was there any environmental...
No. Yeah, right now, the...where the line runs is through the sort of that old parking field area that's to the...would that be the east of the building? But that's where the building's going in, so part of the new building will be over that. Some of the excavations already taken place. So this is...there shouldn't be any contamination or anything along those lines.
Did I move to accept I?
Second.
Been moved in seconded to accept I, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passed. Name of bills? Any questions?
I have one question. Can you find my piece of paper? Sorry, I didn't get it to you earlier, Dr. Faust. I was kind of busy with Brenda yesterday. On page 47...
She said she couldn't hear you. I'm sorry.
Page 47.
Are you talking to the mic?
I am.
Maxine says she can't...
Forty-seven. It...the third one down, it's Ms. Elena's consultant, Terry B. Greer, DBA.
That's my executive coach.
Oh, okay, okay. I noticed the even amount. It's what got my attention.
Multiple...
No, that's just something when I look through the bills, if I see something with the even amount, it gets my attention. But, okay, so that's executive coach. Okay. That's it.
That's my contract.
No, that's mine. I just... Everybody needs a coach. Okay. That was my only question.
Any others? Entertainer motion, please.
I move to pay our bills.
Second.
Been moved in seconded to pay our bills. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passed. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming this evening. We're moving into the executive session, period, and so we will say goodnight to you. Good evening.